Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Brookline Select Board for Tuesday, June 28, 2022. Let's go into news and updates. I just want to remind everyone that we are not going to have a meeting this time next week due to the holiday. Any other news or announcements? John?
Yeah, thanks very much. I just, I'm sorry that I don't have the exact number in front of me, and I was scrambling to get it just as we went up. There was a significant report, nothing that would come as a total surprise to folks, but it's always the shocking nature of the disconnect between the average price of housing in the greater Boston area and average incomes in the greater Boston area is something that we always need to keep in front of us, and it was underscored this week by the release of some, some new and updated information. And I'll probably get the number a little bit wrong, but essentially what, what was determined was that it would require a household income of about $180,000 a year to afford the median price home in the greater Boston area, and it's either greater Boston area or Boston. And of course, you know, as harsh as that gap might be, I think people can pretty much surmise it would be that harsh and maybe even harder in, in Brookline. And on that theme, the, I just want to say thank you to the people who are in charge of Brookline's Housing Production Plan and who held a community forum last night that was very well attended, around about 150 people at least at one point during the evening. They survived being Zoom bombed by some, some, you know, ill-intended people who interrupted the meeting but did not manage to bring it to an end, thankfully. The group pulled back together and finished their meeting and got a lot done, extremely informative, a lot of information in the meeting, excuse me, about the progress that Brookline has made in the past decade in terms of adding housing units, but also in terms of the number of subsidized quote unquote affordable housing units in Brookline. So it's always great to hear that that inventory has been growing. It's always good to be reminded of the ample opportunities that we have in Brookline to add more housing units. And I commend to everyone the tape of the meeting that it went on for, you know, two hours plus, but it was a two hours plus well spent and that you should be able to find the, the recording of it on the Brookline Interactive Group channel. And I would just suggest those who didn't get to attend last night's meeting might take a look.
Great. Any other, Marion?
Yeah. So first, I just want to say I'm in Oregon visiting grandma. We're here at my mom's house.
And happy birthday.
Thank you. And I turned 50 yesterday. So I made the whole half century on to the second half. And, and for those of you who are from the West Coast, I did make my stop at See's Candy today. But on a more serious note, I just want to say that, you know, for those of us that have been fighting for reproductive rights, you know, I was a trained facilitator in college. I was one of those people that, you know, made the, the line so that women could walk into Planned Parenthood without being verbally and physically assaulted. So from the days of my early college days till now reproductive rights for women has been, it's just, it is a human right. It is a health right. And I'm so, there are no words for what the Supreme Court has done and may continue to do to chip away at our civil rights. And I just feel like it's worth saying that this is something I hope we as a town, I know there's a lot of chatter about what we can do as a town and, and I'm, and I'm in fully support of whatever that is as a town, as an individual, as a state. This fight is just starting. So everybody you know needs to vote and everybody they know needs to vote. And we, we're just beginning. Just stay angry. That's all I gotta say.
Mike?
Thanks Ted. I just want to report Bernard and I interviewed the people who had applied for the, with one exception, for the Ranks Trace Voting Committee. And I thought that the process of interviewing people went pretty well. What we did was open up a Zoom window for a couple of hours. We fit people in and we had about 15 minutes to talk to each one. And I'd like to use the same pattern another couple of times to see, you know, if it really works even for a committee, it may be a little bit more difficult to, to put together and report back to you all as to whether we can use that as a, on a regular basis. I have to apologize to Bernard because he and I haven't talked about that since then, the people that we talked to, but I think we have, we have a good group and really all the people who've applied. The one exception being one person that we haven't been able to, I hadn't, I just emailed him again to say, if you want to be on this committee, you've got to let us know. So there's one other person hanging out there, but otherwise we've got a good group.
Great. Thank you for the update. And, you know, this is something that we often struggle with. We only meet once a week. Other select boards and other towns meet bi-monthly and interviews take up an awful lot of our time. So to, I want us to do it, but I also am struggling to balance, you know, how long we, we sit in these meetings for, since we are all volunteers. Bernard?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Mike said. The process that we use was very, very good in terms of enabling us to get much deeper into discussions with the candidates than we possibly could at a select board meeting. As the other thing I'd like to mention is just to follow up what Marion said, you know, the issues around Roe v. Wade probably don't affect me at my age, but we have to, I hope everyone, you know, views these issues as not just abortion, but much broader than that. And because they're broader, we have an opportunity to expand the number of people voters who are going to be angry and vote some of these people out who are really just taking away rights that we thought as Americans we benefited from or we, we, we had. And I'd like to just mention that, you know, we're not just talking about abortion. We're talking about contraception. We're talking about gay marriage. And ironically, with respect to Clarence Thomas's position, we're talking about interracial marriage, which is on, on the, on the chopping board, but also in the way to really expand the number of people who should be angry and, and voting against the people who are, who are taking away these rights. When you take away or when you ban abortion, you're also implicitly banning miscarriages. I mean, women who have miscarriages now can expect the police to come in and do an investigation to make sure that it wasn't an induced abortion. And, you know, I mentioned that because it's just so important to think beyond just a narrow, the narrowness of the issue to bring in people who really should be angry, but now think that this is not their, their, their issue. So that's just my, my opinion and my, my thoughts on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other announcements or updates? Seeing none, let's go into public comment. John, do you want to take over?
Thank you very much. Thank you to the public for joining us for this public comment segment of the, of the meeting. It's an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. We have a few rules. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may, if you like, please refrain from personal attacks and from addressing personnel issues during your comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time is up, please conclude your remarks at that time. And if you have more to say, you're welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. Devin, do we have anyone on the list?
First person signed up for public comment is Paul Warren. You've been promoted to a panelist. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name is Paul Warren. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct One. I reside at Carlton Street. And the topic of my public comment is the town administrator selection process. But I would be remiss in starting my public comments about that topic if I didn't first acknowledge Mel Kleckner for his tenure, his outstanding service to our community. It's much appreciated. I as an individual and as a new town meeting member became familiar with the town and its processes much through the education that you've helped provide. So I just want to say on behalf of many residents and town meeting members, thank you for your service. And I hope whatever you choose to do, it's relaxing and rewarding because you deserve it. With that said, I just briefly about the next town administrator process. This is a critical role for the town. Mel has set the bar as an experienced town administrator and one that has helped improve the public engagement of our budget process and our decision making. And I'm hoping that that will continue. And the next town administrator is going to require the confidence and support of the community at large. And that, the process by which we actually select and hire a town administrator will really help define the level of support that the administrator gets, the town administrator. So I wanted to encourage the board, if you'd indulge me on two requests. The first is that I understand from the last meeting that there may be a 48-hour notice of who the candidates are for the town administrator role before you as a select board take up the public interview process. If at all possible, I would encourage you to increase the lead time on that so that the public can know who the candidates are and have an opportunity to research them and understand them and then be able to witness and observe your interview, public interview process. The second ask is that it wasn't clear to me that there would be an opportunity for the public to actually engage and provide you with feedback or even ask questions of the, the candidates. And I would strongly encourage that the, that the public have that opportunity. Perhaps it would be between the period of public comment, the public interviews, which I believe is on the 12th, and then two weeks later, the select board will actually vote, I believe, on the candidate of choice. Perhaps there's an opportunity in between those two dates to provide the public with an opportunity to provide you with feedback as their elected representatives. So that's my ask. And in closing again, Mel, thank you so much for your service. It was, it's greatly appreciated and wish you the best of luck in the future.
Devin, is there anyone else?
At this time, there are 14 attendees and no one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
And handing it back to you, Chair, I, I would like to know if I can just have 30 seconds to say something in response to what Paul just said.
Sure.
Thanks. Well, I'm of a, of a similar mind as, as Paul Warren just expressed in terms of the importance of the community getting a chance to have some input into this process of selection of our next town administrator. And because of that, I just want to sort of put it out there that if we can, and I certainly do hope we can, schedule some form of community forum to let community members express themselves one last time on their thoughts about the future town administrator before we take our vote, which is now scheduled for August 26th, excuse me, July 26th, let me correct myself. If we could have that community forum before that vote on July 26th, I would be comfortable in voting for our next town administrator on July 26th. If we don't have that forum, speaking for myself only, I, I know I wouldn't be comfortable going ahead with the vote on the 26th, and I worry that I would feel compelled to abstain at the meeting on the 26th. So I just thought in fairness to my colleagues, I should, I should put that out there. And thank you for giving me the time to do so.
So I'm a little troubled. One, it sounded like if we don't allow the public to ask questions, then the public won't support the person that this select board chooses to be their next town administrator. Only a few short weeks ago, we got a lot of pushback from the community about who we chose for the chief of police. And I bit my tongue because a lot of those people that were pushing back, I really admire and respect. Hiring practices are not exactly something that should necessarily be done in a very public setting. We have to ensure that this process is equal to each candidate. And I don't know what questions will be asked of every single candidate. And so I can't ensure that they will be treated the same. If Mel would just say a few words about the process that he remembers, I have spoken to Betsy Dewitt a number of times to make sure that this process follows the process that was used to get Mel, who everybody is saying glowing things about. So I'm just a little puzzled. I, I want to hear from Mel first to just make sure that I, I'm not missing something.
Yeah, my real, my recollection is that myself and I believe two other candidates were considered finalists. We did, were provided an opportunity or the board, the select board members of the town were provided opportunity to interview us individually. And then I participated in, I believe, one interview, public interview with the board before, before the board took the vote.
Bernard?
Yeah, I was on the selection committee back then. I recall, although I, my memory is not so great, that we had two select board members on that committee, and there is some public engagement, but I don't remember, you know, the details. But more, what's more important is with respect to Chief Gonzalez, the fact that people had an opportunity to interact with him, including the leadership at the police department, and to ask him questions and to, you know, engage with him has really accelerated the support in the community and in the police department for Chief Gonzalez. So I think that I sort of agree with, with Paul Warren's thinking that it's critically important that people in the community feel that they have had an opportunity to get to know and to give their opinions on the incoming town administrator in order to, you know, have the type of, I mean, support is, is one thing, but what we really want is just to have the community united behind the new town administrator, which is an intangible, but nonetheless something very, very important. And I think frankly, the police chief process, you know, which wasn't perfect, but, you know, did give many people an opportunity. but you did give many people an opportunity, including the select board in advance to to interact with Chief Gonzalez was a very, very important way of yeah, start integrating him into the community and into the police department.
So my recollection is that once the screening committee selected Chief Gonzalez, that is when people started to meet him. We did not do it with the three finalist candidates. I just don't really, I can't imagine a process that we could use where we get three people who want to be our next town administrator and then basically throw them to the wolves. We will basically have to I don't know who's going to show up. I don't know what they're going to ask. If you think that people who are qualified would put themselves in that situation, this is a professional, a very professional staff position. And this board is the one that has to decide who that is. Now, we we determined a screening committee that had very good representation across many different facets of the town. So I'm just I'm just a little puzzled what is going to be accomplished using this public display. John?
Thank you. And I agree with you that it's a very dicey proposition and has to be done right. But it can be done. And you know, we need look no further than Cambridge for a community where it was done. And just to sort of lay out a couple of sort of the guardrails that they follow. People were given anonymity with their questions, but their questions were filtered, if you will, backstopped by a moderator who determined, you know, what were appropriate questions, fair questions, interesting questions, relevant questions, and served to prevent there being any untoward attacks or, you know, develop, you know, whatever you might imagine could happen that would be adverse vis a vis the candidates. And it went, as far as I can tell, people were very happy with the end result. A lot of questions got asked. The questions were delivered, you know, in a very clear fashion in writing. And then each candidate of each of the candidates that were still under consideration for the position of a city manager got a chance to answer. And it it was it was important input. It got cited later by people when they cast their votes between the candidates as to something that affected their thinking about who which candidate was the best candidate. And it was it was it was an opportunity that so far we haven't set up in Brookline. And as I say, it's a kind of opportunity I'd like to see the public in Brookline have. And without it, I just don't feel comfortable taking the vote until we've had it.
Mike?
Yeah, so listening to Paul's request at the beginning and then and then John's, I was have to say what you ended up with, John, is not the same thing as you started with. In the sense that when you made your comment at the beginning, it sounded like you wanted to have an open forum with people asking questions of the candidates or at least of the of the final candidate without any filtering. And certainly, I think that it's perfectly reasonable to say, well, this is the candidate we want. Please send us your questions and we'll take a look at them and present the ones that that are appropriate to the candidate and make sure that we we all have an we have an opportunity to hear the answers. And for that matter, make sure the candidate has enough to present his responses. It's what, as I say, I have any problem with that, having a just a wide open forum, I think is a mistake. I would agree with with Heather, that needs to have, we need to have some control over the process.
So, Miriam, right before I I call on you, I'll just reiterate what the process is going to be and what has happened today. So we voted on a screening committee and we put out the notice, we got applications to screening committee, screened the applicants and recommended three applicants to be interviewed by the select board. You will get by the end of this week a memo with the resumes of those three applicants and the questions that were asked, proposed questions that will be asked in our open, public interview on the twelfth. I will provide a memo topper that will also provide each one of you the opportunity to meet with each one of the candidates in between the twelfth and when we vote two weeks later. So you can ask any questions you like. There is nothing preventing anyone from coming to any any one of us or sending it to all five of us. I would like this question asked. We will review it. We have to agree on what questions will be asked to make sure that we are treating each candidate the same. Miriam?
Thank you. I guess I'm I'm a little confused in the sense that to me we I don't I don't know any process where the public itself interviews the candidate. So we are going to have a public interview. And I imagine and I encourage and I hope that people will send us there, that they'll watch the interviews and they'll send us their opinions. That's that is public engagement. So I really hope we hear from people, but to me, it sounds like that's already built into the process. So I guess I'm just I'm with Mike. I think that that how the process is currently set up, in fact, encourages public engagement to a reasonable point without making it without making it impossible for us to actually conduct the interviews. So I just wanted to put my two cents there. And if we had a mayor and if we had charter change and we had a mayor, then everyone just get to vote for their town administrator. Just had to say, thanks.
Yeah.
John?
Thank you. And again, if I left out some detail in my original comments, I apologize. I didn't didn't occur to me that people would would assume, you know, a wild and woolly evening of attacks upon the candidates for our next town administrator. I think more highly of Brookline than that. But again, citing the Cambridge example, it was not
I'm sorry. It isn't a matter of wild and woolly attacks. That's a matter of wild and woolly questions. I don't think any of us were suggesting that. And I think we're all confident that people decent question.
Yeah, Mike, I'll call on you shortly.
Yeah. However, I'm pretty clear in my own mind that the select board is going to have questions of great interest to the select board. And we will have one evening in which to ask those questions and hear answers from three candidates. That is far from the same as asking the community, inviting the community to submit their questions. And again, getting back to the Cambridge example, this does not have to be filtered by the select board. This could be filtered by the League of Women Voters. It could be filtered by, take your pick of someone who we trust as a suitable moderator for a community forum. And it would be announced as such, a community forum to get acquainted with the three finalists for the position of town administrator, reminding everyone our current town administrator has served twelve years. So this could be a decision that affects the community for the next twelve years. And if there is one opportunity for the community to have its chance to ask its questions through a moderator submitted in a way that is applied to each of the candidates equally, that is enough for me to feel ready to take a vote on August twenty-sixth. Short of that, I'd feel like I'd spend the next twelve years answering the question, how come we never have held even one community forum where people got a chance to ask their questions?
Because this is not a candidate. This person is not running for office. And what you're describing is a candidate's forum, a town hall where somebody is asking for people to vote. This is not American Idol. This is a staff position that reports directly to the select board.
Bernard?
Yeah, I think you're confusing the the issues here. I mean, I don't want a candidate's forum or, you know, the public asking questions of the candidates. I wanted an opportunity for people in the community to express their views. I have heard from people in the community who at least two of the candidates are. I heard I had to hear it from the community, not from any official process, right? And I've heard from the community issues they have with at least one of the candidates that are important for us to think about. I have no problems with either of the candidates, but it would be helpful. Matter of fact, I think it's our responsibility to get a sense of what people in the community are thinking about the candidates that they know, even if we don't know officially, but they know are on the list of finalists. So, you know, the the issue is not, you know, I don't think I said this, but I did, I apologize, is not have the community ask candidates questions, but just to articulate, you know, what their concerns are with respect to the town administrator generally, as well as any issues they think we should be considering with respect to those candidates that they know about.
And they will have the opportunity to do so in those two weeks when the names are released. We have had the public interviews and before we vote.
In other words, they can just send us emails.
Or they can feel free to speak at public comment like Paul Warren just did.
Well, between the twelfth and the twenty-eighth, there's only one public comment. And that's when we vote.
Well, they can always exercise their right to pick up the phone or email. We have to move on because we have a joint hearing at six. Any other discussion?
It's good that we know what what the process is going to be. And I don't think it's a sufficient process, but we know what it is. And that's fine.
Okay. I'm going to move into miscellaneous. The first up is the meeting minutes from Tuesday, June twenty-first, twenty-two. Any edits or comments? Seeing none, I will move the approval of the meeting minutes from June twenty-first, twenty-two. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next, I move accepting donations from the United States Golf Association for in-kind projects related to the United States Golf Open Championship, tree pruning work for parking at Robert T. Lynch, thirty thousand dollars. Robert T. Lynch Golf Course, June twenty-twenty-two, lost revenue, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Eco Restoration, Robert T. Lynch, fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Lost Pond Restoration Project, thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Sustainability Two, in-kind construction projects, fifty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Approving the authorization to hire request for a preservation planner in the Department of Planning and Community Development. Accepting a sidewalk easement from Kenwood Investments LLC over its property at twenty Boylston Street. Move approval of Amendment twenty-eight in to the contract with William Ron Associates for the Brookline High School Project in the amount of seventeen thousand, sixty dollars for design of signage for one hundred and fifteen Greeno Street and the United Arts Building. Approving change order number twenty-four with Skanska for the building high school project reconciliation of hold allowance and contingency expenditures in the amount of zero dollars. Approving change order number two with Lambrian Construction in the amount of seventy-three thousand, seventy-two dollars for temporary shoring to tunnel at the north entrance to facilitate quad scope of work for the Brookline High School Project. Awarding and executing contract number twenty-three dash one, school grounds maintenance with M. Neves Incorporated of North Dartmouth, Massachusetts, in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and forty cents. Approving extra work order number one for work by Preferred Contractors Incorporated in conjunction with contract number twenty-one dash ten, temporary seasonal refrigeration at Jack Corrine Ice Rink in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Awarding a primary contract with KS Corporation of Rockland, Massachusetts, and the secondary contract with Markings, Inc. of Pembroke, Massachusetts, for contract number twenty-three dash four, pavement markings. KS Corporation Markings Incorporated, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Markings, Inc. one hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Approving change order number twelve with Gilbane in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars for miscellaneous additions and credits to contract work for the Driscoll School Project. Approving change order number one with Lambrian Construction for the finished floor manufacturer change for the Brookline High School Project in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. Approving the following appropriation transfer request from the school department, fifty thousand dollars from private day schools to legal services. Approving the alternate manager application for the president of NEDA ally Enriquez. Approving a temporary wine and malt beverage non-sales license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a graduation dinner to be held on July twenty-ninth to twenty-twenty-two from five-thirty PM to eleven PM at Fifteen Newton Street. One hundred and twenty people are expected to attend. And finally, approving the twenty twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three open air parking licenses. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
I except I would like to know with the zero dollar.
Usually it's a it's an accounting thing. And the chair votes aye. Okay, so we've got two short presentations. The first is tree service contract. Alexandria Alexandra Betteo?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Alexandra Betteo. I'm the director of Parks and Open Space. So I'm just going to pull up some slides real quick to just walk through some questions regarding our tree service contract that is under consideration here this evening. So everyone seeing that main title slide, okay?
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right, so the tree contract in front of you, I'll kind of give a quick overview of that and then talk a little bit about how that contract ties into our Urban Forest Climate Resiliency Master Plan. So the tree maintenance contract in front of you this evening is for four hundred and seven thousand dollars. This includes contracted services that help us with our tree pruning, tree removal, town school grounds, tree removals, town and school grounds, prunings, cemetery prunings and removals, as well as our emergency response. And that's everything from storm response during wind events and hurricanes, all the way to our snow response in the wintertime as well. So we typically have one crew, which is made up of two staff from our contractor that's in here. We like them to be in every week and we aim for that. And they're doing pruning around on our street trees at our cemetery, on our school grounds, town grounds, parks, open spaces, et cetera. I will say that that total does not include the extra work orders that we typically need because of the cost of the contract crew. And so oftentimes, the overall price, if you will, for us to bring in that contract crew is much higher than the number you're seeing in front of you. So the Urban Forest Climate Resiliency Master Plan, if you aren't familiar with it, I would encourage you to take a look on the town's website at that. So this is a plan that was finalized last year. And we were able to obtain a MVP, a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant from the state. municipal vulnerability preparedness grant from the state to help fund this study. And so the outcomes and recommendations from this study are shown here on this slide. I just wanted to kind of pull those up before I went into quickly the assessment that came out of the study as well. So, you know, the high level key steps that we have in front of us as recommended from the urban forestry study was that we need to grow and build the extent of the urban forest that we currently have. We want to protect what's already there and manage it for long-term health. That can be from pests, disease, climate change, et cetera. We have to engage all stakeholders in this work as well as external partners, and we want to implement some of the strategies and tactics and data collection that were outlined in the plan. So quickly, this map gives you an overview of the tree canopy assessment. So this tree canopy assessment was done in 2014, and we had canopy coverage of 46.3% in 2020 when it was conducted. We did see a decrease to 44.7%. So there were losses and gains depending on what type of property you're looking at, where that property is located, et cetera. But we also, you know, I think the news, I will say, is that we have a very robust tree canopy, especially if you look at our peers. So in other cities such as, you know, Washington DC, they have 35% tree canopy coverage. In New York, they have 24% canopy coverage. Our neighboring cities right here, Cambridge, 26% canopy coverage. Boston, 29% canopy coverage. So, you know, that while it is decreasing and has decreased since 2014, and we had a net loss of about 71 acres, overall, our tree canopy is robust. However, it is not evenly distributed. So in Northern Brookline, we see less canopy coverage than we do in South Brookline. Part of the analysis was also looking at our street tree conditions. So we had over 12,000 trees inventory. These were trees that are within the public right of way or overhanging the public ways. This did not include our cemetery and parks, or at least not all of the trees that were in our parks and on school grounds. Overall, really fantastic results, something that I think the town of Brookline, the select board can be really proud of. 75% of our trees were found to be in excellent condition, 18% good, 5% fair, and only 3% poor or dead. And I will say that the maintenance contract that's in front of you this evening is part of the reason that we're able to achieve these numbers. That annual pruning and structural pruning that occurs and removal of hazard trees and replacement with new healthy trees gets us to the percentage breakdown that you see here this evening. So overall, the takeaways from the assessment was we did have a decrease in canopy coverage, but we have compared to our peers, very good canopy coverage. It is not equally distributed, as I said. And so we really, the majority of the loss that we're seeing of our canopy is really on single-family residential properties in South Brookline. And so that's something that while my next slide, I'll talk to you a little bit about our plantings, which we do every year, you know, that increases our public right-of-way tree plantings, but that loss and where we're seeing the most of the decrease on single-family residential properties, that is difficult for us to make up with our current mechanisms that are in place. So our plantings, we'll say, you know, as with all work across the town, COVID did impact the work that happens in parks and open spaces and our forestry team for our tree planting. So there is a lot of variability in these numbers for the plantings from year to year. I would say that on average, we do about 350 to 450 plantings per year. That's in the spring season and in the fall. So 2019, we had 429. 2020 was 335. We had a, you know, significant amounts of time where we had staff not here or were working on varied shift schedules because of COVID, et cetera. But we made up for that big time last year and had one of our record years of 536 trees in the public right of way that were planted. I will say we expect a decrease this year in those tree plantings. We have, you know, a very talented team here that does these tree plantings. These tree plantings are all done in-house by our town staff. However, one of those positions, our forestry zone manager, was vacated last year by the certified arborist that held it, and we have been unable to fill that position for the last, I guess, eight months now. So we are also doing removals. There's a kind of a wide variety of reasons why we see the removals. Everything from, you know, storm response to pest and disease, you know, hazard tree conditions, you know, possibly some other concern for development that occurs and a change of land use. So, you know, the question that I was asked is, you know, are we marching in place or are we making progress? I would say we are doing an excellent job with the resources that we have. However, those contractual services, which we have to rely upon, are becoming more and more expensive, and we are not getting the same value for that dollar. And so we are, we want to do more, and that is the recommendation for us to increase our overall tree canopy coverage up to 49% in the next decade. However, for us to do that, we would need to be not only doing pruning maintenance and maintaining our existing canopy in a health and safety safe way, but we would also need to be planting more along the lines of 700 to 800 trees each year, which is physically impossible for us to do with the resources that we have in place now. So I think the story is positive and what we've been able to achieve thus far, I think to get where we are going, we need some different inputs to get to those outputs. And with that, I will stop hearing, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you so, so much. And I do apologize that we are pressed for time. John?
Thanks so much, Alexandra. And I'm very glad to hear that you addressed some questions that I had shared with you prior to the meeting, and you got right to the point. And it does make me wonder, do we have a number as to what would need to be, just talking in terms of a budget number? What would need to be the increase for us to be on track to get to the goal? I think you said it was 49% coverage. Did I quote you correctly? Do you have a number, a budget number?
Yes, we do. And I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can absolutely follow up with you. It is included in the master plan. It lines up, you know, if we needed to increase the amount of plantings we're doing, what we really need to do is add a second tree planting crew. I mean, at this point, we really need to fill the vacancy in the existing tree planting crew, but then we need a second crew and a bucket truck to accompany that. So it's both a capital expense as well as a personnel expense. The other option is that we externalize some of our tree planting. However, our town tree warden, Tom Brady was here. He would say that thinks we get a better value tree planting and in-house than we do if we contract that out. It would be drastically more expensive if we were to do that. But if we needed to, in order to increase the tree canopy and continue to maintain and protect what we do have so that we have a diverse canopy, we would need to increase either staff resources or contractual resources.
I don't, I don't have a magic answer as to where we would find the additional monies, but you know, where this is a very important part of the sustainability goals for the town, you know, climate goals. I do, I do hope we'll take a look at that number and at least explore some ways that we can get to that number. But thank you again.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that update.
Of course.
Have a good evening. We have one more bit of business before we adjourn for the joint convention. Miriam, did you have a question?
There was just a question in the Q and A. I didn't know.
Oh, yes. I instructed Devin to, to make sure that Alexandra follows up with Regina offline. Thank you. Great. Thank you. I think we were going to hear from the chief about two probationary officers who successfully completed the academy training. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. My name's Chair and the rest of the members for the select board. Thank you for having me. I believe this is my first appearance in front of the board. So thank you for having me. I am pleased to come to you requesting approval for appointment of two probationary officers who just recently, as of Saturday, graduated from the Cambridge Northeastern Police Academy after completing six months of rigorous academic and physical training. And we're happy to welcome them on board here at the Brookline Police Department. And so we're seeking approval to set the probationary officer, Oscar Rojas, who's 21 years old and has been a lifelong resident of Brookline. He graduated from Brookline High School in 2018, and he's also currently completing his certification as an EMT. Also, probationary officer Kevin Lawler, who's 25 years old and resides in Westbury. He graduated from Dedham High School in 2014, served in the US Marines from 2014 to 2019, received numerous citations and decorations while serving the country. And so we are seeking approval. We're hoping to have him sworn in later on this week by the town clerk.
Great. Thank you so much and welcome. Any comments from select board members? Otherwise, I might ask these two officers to say a few words about themselves and maybe what they look forward to in their career. Oscar, would you like to go first?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Oscar Rojas. As the chief of police has said, I did graduate Brooklyn High School in 2018. I have been living, living in Brookline my whole life, and being a police officer has been a lifelong dream of mine. And I'm looking forward to serving the community that I've lived so long in and make a difference in a positive impact towards the positive change that we want to see in police departments across the country. So thank you for welcoming me.
Great. Thank you so much. Kevin?
Good evening, everybody. Just really looking forward to learning more about Brookline. I'm from Dedham originally, grew up in Dedham. But like Oscar said, I think that I was given a very good opportunity by the town. You know, six months of the academy was fun, but I'm ready to get to work and start helping the community as much as I can. So thank you for having me.
Great. Thank you both for choosing Brookline. Any comments before I make this official? Bernard?
Yeah, Kevin Lawler said the academy was fun. From what I understand, though, it's a really rigorous, really rigorous program, educational program that really prepares the officers, not just for being cops, but being police officers who can, who know how to integrate themselves into the community, exercise their duties as community policemen, and really, you know, be incredible, incredible assets to the town, whatever town they go to. But, you know, we're lucky that they're coming to Brookline. So I don't mean to put you on the spot, Kevin, but, you know, it may have been fun, but you got a lot, a lot out of that program, I'm sure. So.
Absolutely, sir. It was, it was a lot to learn. And like you said, they, they really harp on being exemplar members of your community. It's one of the more important things that they stress to us throughout the six months. So we're looking forward to being that.
I like that you, you find hard work fun.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other comments before I move the language? John?
Just one quick one, and I won't go into much detail, but people who have been following this process, and as we all know, we do need to fill quite a number of positions in the, in the Brooklyn Police Department, and we are trying. But people who have been following this process will take note that not, not everyone who entered the academy emerged and is now in front of us to be, you know, taking the next step. It's not easy. And someone from the audience was moved to put into the chat, congratulations to these two officers. And I think that's, that's on behalf of the entire town. Congratulations to these two. They, they've taken an important first step, and it was, it was not something that, that all of the candidates succeeded at doing. So they've, they've already distinguished themselves in that respect. So, well, welcome to the, to the next step in the process and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Well, let's make this official. I move the appointment of the following students to probationary officers within the police department. Oscar, how do you pronounce it? Rojas?
Correct.
Oh, okay. And then Kevin Lawler. All those in favor, please say aye. Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye. Thank you very much. Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. You guys are official. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Nice to see you, Chief.
Thank you for having me. I am going to continue to challenge them. It's going to be a process, but we're going to support them. They start in-service training and move on to field training after this. So I think we're going to have great caliber officers coming up.
Oh, excellent. It's just more fun. Excellent. Okay. One little piece of business before we get to the library trustee interviews that I forgot to move. So the tree service contract actually does need a vote by us. So I will move approval of awarding and executing contract number PW 23-3, upkeep of trees and related work with Northeastern Tree Service, Inc. of Cranston, Rhode Island, in the amount of If there are any questions before I call the roll, that was the vote that needed to happen when Alexandra Betteo presented her update on the trees. Any, any comments before I call the roll on that vote? Okay. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. And now, do I have to adjourn our meeting so that we can enter into a joint session? I think that's what I have to do. So we will adjourn our select board meeting, and I will turn it over to Michael Burstein, who will conduct the joint session.
Thank you, Chair Hamilton. Good evening, everyone. I am Michael Burstein, Chair of the Library Trustees, and we are having tonight a joint convention of the library trustees and the members of the select board in order to appoint a new trustee to fill a vacancy that was created when trustee Regina Healy resigned from the board. And I am the first to order business of the joint conventions, as always, is to, we have to elect a chair of the joint convention and I think a secretary or clerk to make sure that the votes are recorded. I see that the, the members of the library trustees are being promoted to panelists, and I just want to make sure that every member of library trustees who is present is there. So that would be me, Laurie Coforn, I do not see yet. Christian Silkett, I see. Rick Fredkin, I do not see yet. Kristen Hung. I do not see Karen Livingston, Carol Lowhe, John Margolis, Quinian Martin Page. I see okay, Laurie Catherine, Judith Vanderkay, and Kristen Hung, and I think Sasa and Zelka. So I think that is all of the library trustees. So I think we are here. So usually when we do this, the chair of the library trustees is not, is nominated for chair of the meeting of the joint convention. I will, I will take a nomination for anyone that wish to nominate a chair.
Michael Burstein.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Karen. Does anybody else wish to nominate somebody or self-nominate for chair of the joint convention? I see no hands. I, I try to. I, I try to, I'm trying to remember, we have to vote the chair in this case by, by roll call, if we could just do this by acclamation. I'm, I think we could just do this particular part by acclamation. So, if Chair Hamilton?
Forgive me, Michael. Any virtual meetings, I, I believe we have to do a roll call.
Okay, so I shall do a roll call. So, the election of the chair of this meeting of the joint convention. Miriam Ashkenazi?
Yeah.
Michael Burstein votes yes to be the chair. Laurie Cawthorn?
Yes.
Christian Salkett?
Yes.
Is Rick Fredkin here? Okay, if Rick shows up, please do promote him. Bernard Green?
Yes.
Heather Hamilton?
Yes.
Kristen Hung?
Yes.
Karen Livingston?
Yes.
Carol Lowey?
Sorry, yes.
John Margolis? John Margolis? You're on mute.
Aye.
Quinian Martin Page?
Yes.
Mike Sandman?
Yes.
Judith Vander K?
Yes.
John Van Skoyak?
Yes.
Sasa and Zelka?
Yes.
Okay, I believe I have everybody on the joint convention alphabetical order. We now need nominations for a clerk or secretary of this joint convention. Is there any, are there any nominations? You may self-nominate as well.
Michael?
Yes, Heather.
What is the role of the secretary?
Basically, just to record the vote and then I believe just write up a one-page report that says that we held a joint convention and who was appointed. And that's, I think that's the official document that has to be filed with the town clerk's office. So, Karen? Sorry, I can't hear you. You're on mute.
Yes.
Yes, for?
I would do it.
Okay, so you'll nominate yourself. Okay, thank you. I, I will also keep track of the voting and everything so I can pass that information on to you later. Are there any other nominations? And I do not see any nominations. So, Miriam Ashkenazi?
Yes.
Michael Burstein, yes. Laurie Cawthorn?
Yes.
Chris Chenyu Salkett?
Yes.
I still do not see Rick Fredkin. Bernard Green?
Yes.
Heather Hamilton?
Yes.
Kristen Hung?
Yes.
Karen Livingston?
Yes.
Carol Lowey?
Yes.
John Margolis?
Yes.
Quinian Martin Page?
Yes.
Mike Sandman?
Yes.
Judith Vander K?
Yes.
John Van Skoyak?
Yes.
And Sasa and Zelka?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. We have a chair of the meeting and a clerk. Thank you all. Before we get started on the, the main part of the joint convention, I just wanted to acknowledge in this forum the, the sad loss of Mimi Gaffey, who was the longtime admin at the library, the administrative assistant. Mimi sadly passed away recently. I, I believe her funeral was actually today. Mimi was the glue that held the library together in many ways. And it is, it's a loss for the library and for the town of Brookline. I was at the visiting yesterday and there were many people who live and work in Brookline who were there to pay their respects to the family. Before we get started with the meeting, the candidates for the vacancy, I believe Carol Lowey wanted to make a statement. So, Carol, if you please?
Yes. Among the current applicants for the position of library trustee are two personal friends. I did not recruit them. However, they do strike me as extremely well qualified to serve as trustees. Concerned that my participation in the selection process might present an ethical issue or even the appearance of one, I consulted with the members of the executive committee and the longest-serving library trustee. And none of them felt there was any inherent conflict of interest. I also consulted with the State Ethics Commission and was also told there was no obvious conflict, but that I should file a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest form with the town clerk, which I have done. And also explain my situation to my colleagues on the board and my friends on the select board, which I am now doing. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Carol. I appreciate your letting us know about your situation. As I'm sure you also do the candidates. We are, before we start interviewing the candidates, two things. First of all, Rick Fredkin had been serving as a timekeeper for us. We're going to be asking each candidate one question. And with Rick not here, I'm gonna ask John Margolis if you could serve the role as timekeeper. I know you don't have a sign, but if you could give a thirty-second warning on the two-minute question to every candidate, maybe just raise your hand, that would be useful. And then raise both hands if they've run out of time and I will have them conclude.
Would you like me to raise my hand or just say thirty seconds?
Just say thirty seconds, that works. And then raise your hand for stop. The, the second thing I just want to note and I just wanted to remind all the candidates, and I am hoping and assuming that they are all in the waiting room, is that remember, this, this appointment only lasts until the next town election, which admittedly is almost a year away, but you are appointed until May twenty twenty-three, at which point anybody who wishes to stay on the board, who was appointed, would have to run, presumably run to fill out the remainder of the term on this, which I believe would be one more year at that point. And then you'd have to run again in twenty twenty-four. That said, you know, anybody can take out papers for any seat at any time, but this appointment only lasts until then and you're technically not considered an incumbent in that election. But once appointed and once you're sworn in at the town clerk's office, you are considered a, a library trustee with all the full powers and authority of the library trustees. So, I'm going to be asking the question, which was already sent to all candidates in advance so that they're known of the question and are prepared for it. And we're going to talk to the candidates in reverse alphabetical order. So, I'm going to ask Devin, if you could start by appointing or promoting Greg Tharp to the panelists. And Greg, you're there?
I'm right here, Michael. So, good, good afternoon, good evening, the board and library board of trustees. Thank you all for letting me have the opportunity to address you all tonight. Just to answer your question, what will I bring to the board of trustees if appointed? I have the voice for the library, that I focus on my library card. I began my library career, so it's about here and I've received a library degree. I was appointed to stay connected about the culture of library training development and have published articles on this topic as my first project. And that is, it's just my library training experience. To network to the community and public service to the board, having public support, but in basically, you just commit to contract across recovery government culture and having sort of a variety of projects within the federal, the local government. It's included by business academics and library training and experience will make me good act to the library board of trustees.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you very much for answering the question, what we bring to the board of trustees if appointed. And thank you also for having provided your, your statement in advance to the entire joint convention as well. Devin, the next candidate we wish to hear from is Robert Stern. Robert, please go off mute and turn on your camera if you can. And as you know, the question is, what will you bring to the board of trustees if appointed? Robert, you should be able to take yourself off mute. There is a button, I think. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you very much for your time. My experience in public libraries began during high school when I worked as a page at the Springfield Public Library. Throughout my college career, I worked at libraries. As a medical academic, I understand the importance of information services for members of the community and students. I've been an avid and frequent user of the Brookline Library for over forty years. As library trustee, I would bring my seventeen years of experience as chief of the clinical department at the BI, including at, as service at times of institutional stress and having to make decisions under financial constraints as the library now faces. In addition, I would hope that my education and professional experiences would contribute to my evaluating library programs and technologies that would best serve the informational needs of our residents and hence the library. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much. And Devin, our next candidate to be promoted to panelist is Alexandra Seaman. Alexandra, please take yourself off mute, turn on your camera and the same question. What will you bring to the board of trustees if appointed?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to investigate and learn about working with the library and working with the community. I think what I would bring to this is my work ethic, which is collegial, responsible, with responsible commitment and a lot of energy. And I have the experience of an individual patron, which I think we all have, but also as a teacher who has worked collaboratively with librarians for my whole forty-plus year as a educator. And finally, I would bring dedication to your mission, the mission of the library to creatively and I think imaginatively serve the many and diverse needs of our community. I have enjoyed the library. It is part of our lives, my whole family. Starting with storytime when my children were little and taking my grandchildren to the library. So, it is with great interest and eagerness that I would like to, to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Devin, our next candidate in reverse alphabetical order is Sharon Kramer. I thought you've already appointed her. Great, thank you. Sharon, please go off mute and turn on your camera. And the same question, what will you bring to the board of trustees if appointed?
Thank, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to answer the question of what I will bring to the board of trustees if appointed. On a personal level, I'm a native of Brookline who was fortunate enough to grow up here and then also to raise my family here. The library was formative for all of us, not just for providing books and for inspiring a love of reading, but also for the variety of programming that is offered to all ages and how it formed an essential fabric of the town. On a professional level, as Dean of Institutional Research and Assessment at Berkeley College of Music in Boston, I have broad and in-depth knowledge of assessment, evaluation, data analytics, data visualization, benchmarking and program evaluation. These skills and their use for decision-making and strategic planning are essential to the work of the library. In addition to the many assessments and reports that I have produced, including one for the Berkeley Library and I attached a summary infographic to my materials, which I hope you had a chance to see. I have also used my skills to make significant contributions in the fields of diversity, inclusion and equity. In twenty nineteen, I was one of the authors on a report called Women in the US Music Industry: Obstacles and Opportunities. This was a groundbreaking in understanding the experiences of people identifying as women throughout all aspects of the music industry. It has received extensive media coverage and the Recording Academy, which is also known as Grammys, has continued and expanded this work and has pledged funding to bring about change. In twenty twenty, I participated in a nine-session anti-racism curriculum and training. Quickly, I then worked with colleagues in DNI to move our work from the theoretical to the practical, conducted campus-wide equity and diversity survey, shared the results and we're using this data to inform initiatives and programs to create a more inclusive environment for teaching, learning and working. For these professional and personal reasons, I feel I can bring great value to the board of trustees if appointed. Thank you.
And thank you, Sharon. And thank you, Devin, for, for being on top of the list. I should have provided this to you before, in advance in that reverse alphabetical order. I apologize. Our next candidate we are hearing from is Judy Goldman. And the same question, what will you bring to the board of trustees if appointed?
Good evening. If appointed to the library board of trustees, I will bring my understanding of language literacy and learning. Developed over thirty-seven years as an English professor at UMass Boston, a public majority-minority institution. UMB's commitment to diversity, inclusion and student success shaped my own. Specializing in the teaching of secondary and post-secondary reading and writing in urban multicultural contexts, I am an, I am experienced at structuring democratic and inclusive policies and practices for building knowledge. Becoming a trustee, I would bring my experience to the library at a crucial time when its own strategic plan expressly commits to a more intense focus on racial equity, diversity and inclusion. Indeed, the strategic plan's promise to the community, to meet you where you are, matches my own long-held commitment as a public educator to listen acutely, adapt to my students' needs and to meet them where they are. I am interested in being the kind of trustee who engages with the community through active listening and in concert with the director, looks for ways to transform needs into actions. Of the responsibilities listed in the trustee's handbook, I bring thirty years of administrative experience to four. Governance and policymaking, strategic planning, human resources and continuing education. My prior positions as a department chair and university faculty development officer entailed hiring, scheduling, personnel reviews, budget negotiations, strategic planning, committee oversight, outcomes assessment, fundraising, self-study and action plans. Finally, by bringing my knowledge of inclusive literacy practices and public institution stewardship to the Brookline Public Library, I would hope above all, as poet Marge Piercey puts it, to be of use. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Our next candidate is Joan Gallows. And Joan, the same question, please make sure you are off mute and camera on and yes, okay. What will you bring to the board of trustees if appointed?
Thank you and good evening, everybody. If appointed, my more than forty-five years of experiences as an educator and academic leader means that I bring a variety of both problem-solving strategies and competencies to the board, as well as the values that being an educator represents. A focus on learning, equity, inclusion, respect for personal and community development and the more important, learning how to do more with less. Second, I bring a passion for libraries and a unique twenty-year lens on their changing roles, opportunities and challenges through my longtime work with Harvard's Leadership Institute for Academic Librarians and other work with library professionals around the world. Third, I bring a variety of nonprofit board experiences as a member, as well as a board chair, committee chair and so on, including as a public library foundation board member. And I have also worked well with boards from the other side as well. Understanding what is the board world, what is not. I bring informed knowledge of how organizations work and can work better. My area of training is organizational behavior and management. And I bring a long-time love for and commitment to Brookline. Would be happy to support the role of the library in the town's quality of life.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate is Jenna Fagreus. I believe, oh, sorry, no, Alan Fish, that's correct, Alan Fish, and then Jenna, my apologies. Alan? You are, should go off mute. There you are, off mute and camera on. And thank you. And please answer the same question. What will you bring to the board of trustees if appointed?
Thank you. I'm thrilled to be among such distinct
Thank you. I'm thrilled to be among such distinguished company. And I plan to answer the question. I plan to bring my intelligence, my perseverance in solving problems creatively, my commitment, and my time. I'm a part-time practicing psychiatrist. My specialty is community psychiatry, where a mental health or addictions program is embedded into the fabric of the community. Besides delivering the basic services at the highest quality level, community psychiatry has ongoing outreach efforts with unlikely partners. For example, in an addiction program, it liaisons with the local court so that both become enlightened about the other's world. These efforts are fueled by systems thinking, where the whole thing is greater than the sum of the parts. Like a Swiss watch, each gear is exquisite in its own right, but put them together in a skillful way, and voila, you have a brand-new element, namely a perfectly functioning timekeeper. I have a question that I would ask if appointed. What should be the role of the Brookline Public Library in five or ten years? I believe that books are but in the digital age, what functions should the Brookline Public Library embrace beyond books? I'm passionate about the town of Brookline, the Brookline Public Library, and all of the key themes and principles of the library's new strategic plan. I especially resonate with diverse perspectives, learning more about community needs and interests, and the D E I J priorities. Happy to be here and hope to be appointed.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate is Jennifer Grass. And Jenna, I have the same question, as you know, for you. What will you bring to the Board of Trustees if appointed?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. If appointed, I would bring both experience and enthusiasm to this position. I have devoted my career to working in libraries. I've worked in all different departments of libraries in circulation, cataloging, and now in reference, as well as in a variety of libraries. I also have an educational background in libraries that I think could be of benefit to the trustees. I have my master's in library science as well as a JD. In addition to that, I have served as the president of the of ABLE, the Association of Boston Law Librarians, and as the chair of two groups of LLNE, the Law Librarians of New England. In addition to that, I bring a great enthusiasm for libraries that I think would benefit this position. In addition to working in libraries, I'm a long-term patron of libraries as well as a lifelong learner. I hope to help to contribute to libraries and support libraries through this position. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Anne Depew, who I believe needs to be promoted to panels. There she is. And if you could go off mute and turn on your camera. Thank you. And the question that we ask is, what will you bring to the Board of Trustees if appointed?
Well, thank you for having me. I assume you have my cover letter and resume, which lay out my professional skills and experience. And I'll let those documents speak for themselves and use these two minutes laying out the more intangible things that I offer to the Board of Trustees. I'm happy to answer any questions about the rest, if you have any. Mostly, I bring a love of the library in Brookline. I've been in all the branches, participated in many events and activities sponsored by all the various groups and the children's programs delivered by the wonderful staff. Over the last few years, I've transitioned to mostly electronic book borrowing, and I miss being in the library as often as I used to be. It seems like a good time to help the library professionals think about how to deepen connections to the library in light of this shift that I'm sure has occurred with more people than just me. I also bring a deep and strong belief in the mission of the public library. I believe that the library is and should remain a center of intellectual life in Brookline. It should also remain and should always strive to grow in its role as a social support and a cultural center. It should be a place of safety, exploration, inclusion, and diversity in every sense. I love that I can get a book, a recommendation from a knowledgeable staffer, a tool to borrow, a game to play. I love that I can work there using Wi-Fi, that people of all ages rely on the services, and that a library card takes so many so far. I also bring a desire to deepen my role as a Brookline community member. I was an active volunteer at my children's school and in the school department, including in roles such as chair of the school council. I'd like now to apply that same energy, time, and expertise to the library. You guys have a tough job tonight, so good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much. Our final candidate for the position is Bill Davidson. So, Bill, if you could go off mute and turn on your camera and the same question, what will you bring to the Board of Trustees if appointed?
My name is Bill Davidson, and I am a candidate for the Brookline Board of Library Trustees. The Public Library of Brookline owes its success to the good work of the library staff. The induction of a new director is a huge change, and change can be unsettling for staff. But if the Board of Library Trustees can help make this transition a smooth one, it will help ensure the continued success of the library and the confidence of the library staff. New leaders often initiate bold changes to begin their tenure, but changes at the library should not cause a panic for employees. As I witnessed firsthand as a library employee, staff went to work wondering if their jobs would be terminated. Some felt their protection was to turn against fellow staff members to an approval of the director. The library does not function properly when the staff feel unsafe and unsupported. After the Public Library of Brookline hires a new director, it is paramount that the library staff are heard. The staff should feel free to express dissenting views on the direction of the library and not fear retribution. They may not have a physical presence in meetings between the Board of Library Trustees and the library director, but their needs deserve representation. As a trustee, I would be an employee advocate on the Board of Library Trustees. I propose to be a liaison between staff and trustees, a person who can bring staff questions, comments, and concerns to meetings. The Board of Library Trustees has an opportunity to improve the library work environment. We are fortunate to have such a talented, diverse, dedicated library staff. Let's invest in their futures as they have invested in the future of our community.
Thank you very much. And that is the last of the candidates for the vacancy. So we are almost ready to go on the vote. I just want to say a few other things. First of all, as has been alluded to, I want to mention that all of the candidates for the vacancy did in fact submit applications to the members of the joint convention. So we have had a chance to review letters, resumes, and other material. In addition, the Board of Trustees did conduct interviews. And as I think we can all agree, as has happened almost every time we've done this appointment, we have many excellent candidates. You know, we with Brookline, we get a surfeit of of people who would be incredible on the Board of Library Trustees. And sadly, unfortunately, we can only appoint one person each time. That said, we've had other people who have gone through this process, who have then gone on to help out the library in other ways, been on the foundation or friends or done other things, or have even run at a later time to be on the board, since this is, of course, an elected board. And in fact, right now, I think we have quite a few members of the current Board of Trustees were originally first joined this board through this very same appointment process. I'd also just like to take one moment to, first of all, thank Devin and Mel and other members of the town staff who are helping to make this process go smoothly and to thank the five members of the select board, Miriam Ashkenazi, Bernard Green, Heather Hamilton, Mike Sandman, and John Van Scoeyck. Because, you know, we on the Board of Trustees know how incredibly busy you are every Tuesday night with with town business. And it is something that when when we have a vacancy on our board and we need you to help be a part of this process, we try to make it go as smoothly as possible. So I will describe the voting process and remind everybody how this works. I am going to poll the members of Miriam. Do you have a question?
Yeah, do we get to discuss it? All the candidates?
If 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 we wish, if you wish to have a discussion, we can do a discussion, yes. So if anybody wishes to say anything, by all means, and then I will describe the voting process once we're done. So, Miriam, yes.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm just curious what you feel as the library, current library trustees. Where is your greatest weakness? Because I at least two of the candidates, I think, really bring something or three that I say I'm struggling between three. And so for me, it'd be helpful to know what it is you'd like, a hole you'd like to see filled or a skill you'd like to see come on to the library trustee board that would, I think, help me.
That is a interesting question. I would like to. Would any of the trustees like to speak to this before I give my thoughts? Because I do. I do not want to make it seem as if I am speaking for the whole board simply as chair. Carol.
Too many buttons to push. I think that Miriam, for me anyway, it really matters less whether we find another lawyer to come on the board or an educator or a physician or a firefighter. I think that what I would most welcome is someone with a collaborative spirit and a real understanding of our mission. And I think a number of the candidates have come to these interviews incredibly well-prepared and very thoughtful and understand that this is not just something nice you do in your retirement or even while working. It's not a hobby. It's a job. And I think the the understanding of what we aspire to do and how to get there and a commitment to the sort of broad spectrum of our patrons is what certainly I'm looking for in a trustee.
Thank you. Do any other trustees want to speak to Miriam's question? I will just add that a lot of what Carol said I agree with. We want to make sure that we have people who do the work. We, you know, right now, because we are hiring a new director, it's good to have people who understand that that's going to be an important vote that's coming up very soon. It's difficult for me to say exactly what skills we need, though, because I tend to feel that the current board does actually cover quite a few skills already. And also, to be perfectly honest, I would say that when I first ran for this board in 2004, I don't know if there was anything necessarily at the time to recommend me as as a qualified member of the Board of Trustees. At this point now, having had as many years of experience I've had since I joined this board in 2004, I think that that, you know, gives more experience. But I'd say, you know, it is a difficult question, you know, I've heard a variety of different things where people have experience with libraries, but also people who don't have experience with libraries, but have experience with institutions, people who are interested in issues of diversity, people interested in issues of library services here. So unfortunately, I don't know if I can qualify any further exactly what it is that I would say that we should most focus on or that you could focus on. So do you have any other questions you'd like to ask?
No, that was actually quite helpful. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so I will just discuss the voting procedure as we have done this before, but we'll do it again. Because just to make sure everybody is aware of how this goes. So what I am going to be doing is polling the members of the joint convention, which I will do in alphabetical order. So, Son, I apologize to you. You will be coming last, like I think you did last time. And when you are called upon, you will name the candidate who you would like to vote for to be appointed to the board from now until May 2023. The voting process, then what's important to understand is that the candidate who is going to be appointed needs to receive a majority of the votes cast by the members of the joint convention. So first of all, I think we have one trustee absent. And if anybody cast decides to abstain and says that they're abstaining, that does not actually count as a vote. So what basically what we have to do is find out how many member votes are actually cast. And the candidate who gets appointed needs to have a majority of those votes. So to give one example, if there are fourteen votes cast and one person receives even seven votes and and everybody else receives fewer than seven, that seven is not a majority. It's only a plurality. And we would then have to do a second round of balloting and then a third round of balloting until we actually have a majority vote for one candidate. I will note in the past that we've always managed to do this on the first round of balloting, but there are never any guarantees. And last time we did this, I think we had only six candidates. Tonight, we have ten candidates. So are there any questions from any of the members of the joint convention before I start to poll? Mike?
Well, I'm just thinking, it's probably too late for the process, but this is a wonderful opportunity for ranked choice voting.
It would be a wonderful opportunity for ranked choice voting, but my understanding is that the way this process works by when we when we first, when I first looked into it with with the state law, that this is the process by which it has to go. The person does have to have the majority vote. So I also, before I do the voting, I just want to again thank everybody and let us see how this process goes. And I would like to thank all the candidates. We had twelve, two candidates decided to withdraw. We have ten candidates right now waiting to find out who will get appointed. It takes a lot to put yourself out there in this appointment process. And again, I want to remind you, this is not the only way to serve the library or the town. And you can always pull papers and run in an election for this for one of these positions. Okay, let us begin. Ms. Ashkenazi.
Yes, thank you. So I have to say all very, very thank you. Big thank you to all who applied and spoke today. But I'm gonna go cast my vote for Judith Goldman.
For Judith Goldman, thank you. Mr. Burstein, I am casting my vote for Sharon Kramer. Ms. Cawthorn.
Sharon Kramer.
Ms. Cawthorn cast her vote for Sharon Kramer. Ms. Chanu Selkot.
Sharon Kramer.
Ms. Chanu Selkot cast her vote for Sharon Kramer. Mr. Fredkin, I believe, is absent. Mr. Green.
I appreciate the materials that you provided us. It gave us a good understanding of different candidates. The interviews helped a little bit, but I'm voting for Jennifer Grace. And I apologize if I messed up your name.
I believe you have it right, Jennifer Grass. I tried to check to make sure about that. Ms. Hamilton.
Judith Goldman.
Judith Goldman. Ms. Hung.
Judith Goldman.
Goldman. Ms. Livingston.
Judith Goldman.
Ms. Goldman. Ms. Loi.
Judith Goldman.
Goldman. Mr. Margolis. Mr. Margolis abstains. Ms. Martin Page.
I'd also like to thank all the candidates. This is a hard decision. They also cast my vote for Judith Goldman.
Judith Goldman. Mr. Sandman.
Joan Gallows.
Joan Gallows. Ms. Vander K.
I cast my vote for Judith Goldman.
Judith Goldman. Mr. Van Scoeyck.
Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Mr. Zelka.
My vote is for Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Okay, so we have John Margolis. I believe you're helping me with counting of this. One, two, three, four, five, six. I see seven votes for Judith Goldman, one, two, three, four, five for Sharon Kramer, one for Jennifer Grass, and one for One for Jennifer Grace and one for Joan Gallas. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll be, I'll be have those, let's see, seven for Judith Goldman. What I said, could you, and what did I say again for Sharon?
Five, five for Sharon Kramer.
And one.
One for Jenna.
One for Jenna, for Grace, and one for Jenna. Nine, nine and five is 14 votes. So I just, if someone would double check that, I have seven plus five plus one plus one is 14 votes, which means that we have one candidate with seven votes out of 14 votes cast. So that is not a majority. So we actually, for the first time in my memory on this process, we have to go through a second round of balloting. There have been, at times when I think we have suggested the idea that, well, let's, let's see what happens. We, we have, I, I would, I would, everyone knows how the voting went. Again, the first round of balloting, Judith Goldman got seven votes, Sharon Kramer got five, Joan Gallas got one, and Jennifer Grace got one. So does anybody have any comments or questions before we go to the second round of balloting? All right, we shall do this again. Ms. Ashkenazi.
My vote will remain with Judith Goldman. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Burstein's vote is for Sharon Kramer. Ms. Cawthorn.
I remain Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer, Ms. Chanu Sulket.
Sharon Kramer.
Rick Fredkin is still not here. Bernard Green, Mr. Green.
Um, I think I'm going to not keep my vote at Jenna Crass, but make it for Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Ms. Hamilton.
I'll remain with Judith Goldman.
Thank you. Ms. Hung.
Judith Goldman.
Thank you. Ms. Livingston.
Judith Goldman.
Thank you. Ms. Loi.
Judith Goldman.
Thank you. John Margolis.
Dan.
John Margolis abstains. Ms. Martin Page.
Judith Goldman.
Judith Goldman. Mr. Sandman.
Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Ms. Vander K.
Judy Goldman.
Judy Goldman. Mr. Van Skoyak.
Sorry, sorry, Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer and Mr. Zelka.
Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Okay, I think we have now a tie vote. We have, my, my count, seven votes for Judith Goldman and seven votes for Sharon Kramer. Can someone confirm that for me? Okay, um, so we, we, we can, I, I've never actually been in, in this part of the process before. We could ask both of those candidates if they would like to address us one more time to help us perhaps clarify our thoughts. We could do another vote and see if somebody else decides to switch to another candidate. I would like to propose that perhaps we give each of these candidates two more minutes to address us. Yes, John Van Skoyak.
Well, I don't want to put John Margolis on the spot, but I will. John Margolis abstained, and of course, this all could be resolved if he were to cast a vote. I don't know if he's constrained from casting a vote, but I'm sure he can tell us.
Uh, John Margolis, would you like to speak to your abstentions?
I said I would abstain unless I could, I was the deciding vote. I don't know if we've completed a round, perhaps we should go another time, or I'll leave that to the chair.
Well, what I will say is that we are currently at a tie vote. I would assume that at the moment, if we do a third round of voting, I think almost all of us would continue to vote for the candidates we have. If you at this point feel comfortable no longer abstaining and voting for what would appear to be one of the two candidates, I will take a third round of balloting and we will see what happens. So let us do one more round of balloting. And I will go through the names again and ask everybody to state once again their preferences. Ms. Ashkenazi.
Bernard has a question.
Oh, Bernard has, I'm sorry, I missed that. Please, Mr. Green.
Yeah, I, I thought we were gonna listen to the two candidates for a couple of minutes. I think.
I'm, I'm more, I'm more than happy to do that first. So let us hear from the two candidates. This time we'll go in alphabetical order. Devin, I assume they're, they are both present and could you appoint Judith Goldman to panelist? And Judith, you will have two minutes. John will again service timer. You'll have two minutes to simply address us with any comments that you'd like about why you would be a good trustee.
Oh, okay. Thanks very much. I have to say that being an observer of this process has gotten me a little bit nerved, unnerved. So I'm feeling a little shaky right now at all of this suspense. I have been, I've been putting in a lot of time recently thinking about my work in relation to the public institution of the Brookline Library. And I feel very strongly, as I have reflected on my own career in relation to the work of the library trustees, that the combination of my training as an inclusive literacy educator, a program director, a department chair, and faculty development officer is a very strong, that, that my intellectual development as a literacy educator in relation to my administrative work as a department chair and faculty development officer combines administration and an understanding of literacy in the public sphere at a moment when the Brookline Public Library has said explicitly that this is what it needs crucially to move itself forward. I, I think the library, I see the library as an institution which is in very good shape that we can continue to move forward in interesting ways. And speaking to Sharon Kramer's own statements about her expertise in assessment, I need to say that I too have published on assessment and could bring that strength to this position as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now Devin, if you could please promote Sharon Kramer to panelist. And Sharon, you will also have two minutes more to address us.
Thank you. Judith, it's interesting that you said that about assessment, and I feel like we definitely have a lot of overlaps, which is why this is so difficult. And in fact, my closest colleague at Berkeley is the dean of faculty development, and I do a lot of work with faculty development as well. So I have utmost respect for you and your credentials. This is a very, very difficult position for the select board and for the trustees. And I really appreciate all your careful consideration of all of the candidates. Just the sheer number of people who applied was, was really astounding to me. One thing I would like to stress that I don't think I've maybe had a chance to yet is just the collaborative nature of the work that I do professionally and just, you know, that I am a very collaborative person. The position of the Office of Institutional Research in a college can live in many different areas. Sometimes it's in the president's office, I live, I report to the provost. But what it really is, is we're consultants to the whole college. We provide assessment and evaluation wherever it's needed and to help forward plans of the, of the, of the institution. So that requires me to be an incredibly collaborative person. I have to work with everybody. I have to be an active, I have to be an active listener. And also I have to be able to make data accessible to many, many different stakeholders and many different audiences. Thank you so much for the time.
And thank you. Um, okay, so we have heard from both, yes, John Margolis.
I just want to congratulate our candidate on their ability to speak to time. Nobody ran over.
That is true, and thank you for that. We've heard from both of the, what I guess are currently, I would presume are finalist candidates for a second time. I think that hopefully gives us more thoughts on how we wish to vote. And I believe John Margolis is ready to possibly not abstain. So I will now do a third round of balloting. Uh, Ms. Ashkenazi.
Judith Goldman, thank you.
Judith Goldman. Mr. Burstein votes for Sharon Kramer. Ms. Cawthorn.
Sharon Kramer.
For Sharon Kramer. Ms. Chanu Sulket.
Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Mr. Fredkin, I believe, is still absent. Mr. Green.
Sticking with Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Ms. Hamilton.
Judy Goldman.
Judy Goldman. Ms. Hung.
Ms. Goldman.
Judy Goldman. Ms. Livingston.
Judy Goldman.
Judy Goldman. Ms. Loi.
Judy Goldman.
Judy Goldman. Mr. Margolis.
Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Ms. Courtney Martin Page.
Judy Goldman.
Judy Goldman. Mr. Sandman.
Karen Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Ms. Vander K.
Judy Goldman.
Judy Goldman. Mr. Van Skoyak.
Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Mr. Zelka.
Sharon Kramer.
Sharon Kramer. Um, I now have, I believe, 15 votes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 votes. And I believe eight of those votes are for Sharon Kramer. Yep. And is that correct?
That's correct.
And seven are for Judy Goldman, and eight out of 15 is a majority. So Sharon Kramer has been appointed to the Board of Library Trustees. I would like to thank all the candidates who applied again. I would like to especially thank Judy Goldman for all of her, her candidacy as well and, and encourage you to think about other ways in which you can help out the library and including possibly the Friends or Foundation. Or as always, this is an elected board and someone can always run in later years for this. I will acknowledge again, this is always a difficult process. We have many people come in. I would think that of all the people applied, the original 12, I think any one of them could be a fine trustee on the board. And it is always very difficult for us to have to only appoint one person to the board, except for that one weird time when we actually had two vacancies and had to appoint two. As, as I know, one of our trustees is very well aware of. Unless there are any other comments or anything from this, it is, I believe, time to adjourn this joint convention. And I believe I need to do that as a roll call vote. So I shall do that. A, can I get a motion to adjourn the convention? From Karen and I heard it from John, so that's a motion and a second, I think, Miriam Ashkenazi as well. So motion to adjourn. Miriam Ashkenazi.
Yes.
Michael Burstein. Yes, Laurie Cawthorn. Laurie Cawthorn. We will come back. Chris Chanu Sulket.
Yes.
Bernard Green.
Yes.
Heather Hamilton.
Yes.
Kristen Hung.
Yes.
Karen Livingston.
Yes.
Carol Loi.
Yes.
John Margolis. John, are you voting for adjourn? I. Courtney Martin Page.
Yes.
Mike Sandman.
Hi, and thank you for running a very well organized meeting.
Thank you. I always try. Judith Vander K.
Yes, and thank you, Michael.
Thank you. John Van Skoyak.
Yes.
And Sasan Zelka.
Yes.
Let the record show that the joint convention adjourned at 7:10 PM. I will be in touch with our newly appointed trustee to make sure that she is sworn in at the Town Corks Office and is able to take on the full powers and responsibilities of a library trustee. I turn this meeting back over to Chair Heather Hamilton of the Select Board.
Thank you, guys, and best of luck. Uh, okay, I thought that that was going to go on much longer. So we will turn our attention back to our agenda. I will official, officially make sure that this is the continuation of our select board meeting for Tuesday, the, God, what is it? The 28th, thank you. 2022, and we are resuming with our public hearings. We have two on the docket, and the first one is for um, a common vic, among other things. Is there anyone here to present on this public hearing?
Good evening. This is Ken Algen. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Because I'm not sure if you, I don't see the video on, but um, if you need to see me, I do have a camera. I'm here. Oh, here we go. Okay, they let me join by video now. Good evening. This is Attorney Algen. Nice to see the members of the Select Board again. I'm here with my clients who are the applicants for the common victular and liquor license. This is Bunso Thierry Hay and Sam Fee Neav. They're the principals of Opsara LLC DBA, Malise Thai Restaurant. And there I'm going to be taking the space currently occupied by Pond Thai Restaurant at 213 Washington Street. The, and the proposed hours would be seven days a week for lunch, 11:30 AM to 2:30 PM, 4:00 PM to 9:30 PM for dinner and for alcoholic beverages, same hours for lunch, and then until 9:00 PM for dinner. Both, both managers are currently employed in the restaurant business. Thierry works as a server at a restaurant in Cambridge. And Sam Fee works as a manager at, at a Thai restaurant in Holden. So they both have experience with, with this type of cuisine and with serving liquor. I'm not sure if you all have a copy of the, the menu that was submitted with the application. So that's going to be new. And just point of interest, Malise, the name of their restaurant is the name of the flower that's on the, that's on the menu there. So your butters have been notified. I mailed out notice to all the butters. I've, I've received several of the return receipt cards back. And the only changes that they're proposing to make to the interior are, are just painting, refreshing the, the paint in the interior. Otherwise, no, no construction.
Great. Thank you so much. I just want to remind the board, so. the votes that we will be taking, a transfer of wine and malt beverage, common vic, approval of an alternate manager, thank you very much for including this in your packet. Many people don't do that right away, and then they scramble to do that later. And then an entertainment license. Do any board members have questions, John?
Just quickly, welcome to the applicants and congratulations on the start of a business. I have a question about not just this application, but others that we're going to see on a routine basis. Should we be incorporating in the language of the application seating that is outdoors versus seating that is indoors? This says twenty-eight, you know, seating for twenty-eight, but it doesn't define, you know, how much of that is indoor, how much of that is outdoor?
It's a good question. I think that that is tied to indoor, and that is something that the fire department requires, but I I'll defer to Mel.
Yes, I believe unless it's dedicated or specified for outdoors, indoor. Are the applicants seeking outdoor seating? Uh, no, we, at this time, only only twenty-eight indoor seats. We we're not seeking outdoor seating at all. Thank you.
May I just do a quick follow up question? I think the restaurant does have outdoor seating, but could someone correct me on that if I'm wrong?
I I believe that the current occupant may have outdoor seating. When we submitted our plans, we were told if we wanted to have outdoor seating, we would need to have you know, something drawn up by by an architect, and we decided not to pursue that. So we're just limiting the seating to indoors. Yeah, just indoors.
Yes, it's two different departments that review those those two seating plans. So if it's indoors, I believe, the building or fire department, because it's occupancy related to the square footage of the restaurant versus outdoor where you're on public space, and we have our DPW department over reviewing those applicant applications.
If the applicant does want to pursue that, they should talk to Tiffany in our office, and she can work through that with you. Thank you.
Miriam.
I just want to say that I just looked it up on Google Maps to get a street view. And this is on the on the side of the street with the post office and the Bank of America or what used to be the Bank of America. So I actually don't think they had outdoor seating. I don't think there's any outdoor seating on that side of the street on Washington Street.
I must have imagined I saw it because I walked past.
I didn't know. I mean, I literally had to go look it up on the, you know, Google Maps Street View, but I'm pretty sure that there's no outdoor seating on that side of the street.
Well, and the applicants themselves say that they're not requesting it at this time, so let's not spend a whole lot of time on this issue unless it becomes an issue.
And I I did want to mention they both are also tip certified, they and the crowd control certified. They went through all the the certification processes. And as I said, they're both they both are experienced with with serving in in restaurants that they work at presently. So and they're here if you if you'd like to ask them any questions regarding the the operation, they'd be more than happy to address anything.
Well, while my members just try to figure out if they're going to ask any specific questions, I will announce that this is a public hearing. Devin, you'll let me know if there are any members of the public who wish to speak on this license application.
At this time, there are eight attendees, and no one has used the hand raiser Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Excellent. Any questions from select board members? I will just ask one, since one of the requests is for wine and malt beverage license. We have some very specific regulations here at Brookline regarding our alcohol. I'm wondering if you can tell me if you are familiar with anything that Brookline asks specifically.
Are you asking myself or the applicants?
Both.
I'm not. I'm not familiar with anything specific that Brooklyn requires. I know that their 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 last call for alcohol is is thirty minutes before the close of of the business, but I'm not I'm not familiar with any other requirements specific to Brooklyn.
So two of our different requirements, one is the alternate manager, which you're you've actually included in your list of requests, so I really appreciate that. There has to be a manager on at all times when you have a liquor license. And then the other thing is a record of any incidences need to be kept in a logbook. So make sure that you are familiar with that procedure. The folks at the police department can walk you through that.
Okay.
Bernard?
Yeah, the question I wanted to ask was, when are you going to open? But before I ask that question, this is a wine and malt liquor transfer, but your menu has a number of cocktails, so there's a little discrepancy there. Very good sounding cocktails, I must add.
I I thought that the current occupant had a full liquor license.
Well, if they do, you're just transferring wine and all beverage. I mean, that that needs to be straightened out.
Okay. Let me just take a look at something real quick. Yeah, if that's the case, we will straighten that out before it goes to the A B C C.
I'm not sure that we'll be able to vote on that this evening.
I'm just just a moment. I'm looking at the category wines and malt beverages with cordial's liquors permit. That's that's not the full liquor license is what you're telling us.
Well, the the real expert is not on the call here tonight. Mel, do you want to try to field this?
I don't have the menu in front of me, so I'm not sure what drinks that Bernard is seeing, but I believe there is a special category for cordials that is allowed, but
The cocktails listed include Elise Ginlet, corn and martini. So I mean, those aren't cordial. Those are actually cocktails. And a couple of the very interesting ones.
So Devin is trying to text Tiffany right now, who is our staff person that oversees our licensing. Why don't we take a pause, see if we can get a hold of Tiffany, get this straightened out? I will close the public hearing with leave to reopen it. And let's vote on the other items, and if we hear from Tiffany, we will vote on the first license, which is the alcohol license. Otherwise, you may have to come back to us.
Okay, and just to answer the second part of the question, they're planning to open as soon as they get the certificate of occupancy, hopefully by August first was was the target date. So we'll we'll see if that can happen.
Okay. We 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 drop down to a reduced schedule, so be sure to follow up very quickly because we only have two meetings in July.
Will do.
I will move three out of the four votes. So I will move approval of the application for a common victular license for A P App Sara, A P S A R A LLC, doing business as Malise Thai Restaurant at two thirteen Washington Street, Brookline, Massachusetts. Proposed manager will be Boonso Theory Hay.
Yes.
Okay, the proposed seating is twenty-eight. Proposed operating hours are Monday to Sunday, eleven thirty A M to two thirty P M, lunchtime, four P M to nine thirty P M for dinner. All those in favor? Bernard?
I.
John?
I.
Miriam?
I.
Mike?
I.
And the chair votes I. The next vote, I move approval of the application of an alternate manager, Semphy Neve for App Sara LLC, doing business as Malise Thai Restaurant at two thirteen Washington Street, Brookline, Massachusetts. All those in favor? Bernard?
I.
John?
I.
Miriam?
I.
Mike?
I.
And the chair votes I. And then finally, I move approval of the application for an entertainment license for App Sara LLC, doing business as Malise Thai Restaurant at two thirteen Washington Street, Brookline, Massachusetts. Entertainment consists of radio and recorded music, Monday through Sunday, eleven thirty A M to nine thirty P M. All those in favor? Bernard?
I.
John?
I.
Miriam?
I.
Mike?
I.
And the chair votes I. So I'm getting an update that it was a wine and malt transfer. That is what the current owner has. So you'll either have to amend your menu or come back to us requesting a different liquor license.
Okay, if the current if the current owner only has a wine and malt beverage license, then we'll have to amend the license, we'll have to amend the menu. So we, I I apologize for any confusion, because I don't think that we can. Well, let me ask the board a question. Can they apply for a full liquor license as a separate application than than the transfer license? Or is that a question for Tiffany?
Tiffany certainly knows more than I do. What I I might do in your situation is to ask us to approve the transfer of the wine and malt right now, and then review with Tiffany whether or not we have an all alcohol license that is unaccounted for or unassigned, because these things are capped. And it would be better to have a wine and malt beverage license than no alcohol license at all.
Yeah, I concur. Thank you for that recommendation. So, yeah, we would like to, if possible, get get approved for at least the beer and wine this evening.
Okay, John?
I'm trying to think of how to say this without indicting myself, but as someone who's had a little bit of experience in ordering from many drink menus in various restaurants, including the current Thai restaurant that is in that location. I believe we're going to discover that there actually is this unusual distinction in the licensing of restaurants that do not serve, for example, they will not serve a gin martini, because that is straight alcoholic beverage, but they do have this odd variation on a license which adds to beer and wine, and they, you know, they use this term cordials. But basically, it's mixed drinks that are not pure alcohol, and that is what the current operator has. And it seems to me that's what the applicant is seeking. Obviously, we are going to have to get it straightened out once the applicant actually requests. I think maybe just by adding the word cordials, but I think just adding the word cordials would put this restaurant in the same category with the current restaurant, which does serve mixed drinks, but but does not, at least on their menu, feature anything like, you know, a straight alcohol drink.
Bernard?
Um, I was, I'm trying to figure out what what is a cordial? And a gin tonic, is that a cordial? But, you know, what my real question is, can we vote the license conditioned on correcting or fixing the menu so that it's clear what they can and cannot serve?
So I'll just address a couple of things. One, the A B C C reviews this as well, and they know more about alcohol than we do. Two, when we say we are transferring the existing license, it is understood that whatever that license is, it will be the same condition granted to this entity. I can try to put that, but I actually think it'll make it more complicated if we try to add to language that we don't understand.
Okay, never mind. I take that back.
So I will move the language that Tiffany has given us, and the petitioner can come back if if they want to amend the license at a later date. But this will at least allow you to open for the August first date.
Right.
Okay. So with that being said, I will move approval of the application for a transfer of a wine and malt beverage restaurant license from Civica Restaurant Group, doing business as Pont Thai Bistro, to App Sara LLC, doing business as Malise Thai Restaurant at two thirteen Washington Street, Brookline, Massachusetts. Proposed manager will be Boonso Theory Hay. The proposed seating is twenty-eight. Proposed operating hours are Monday to Sunday, eleven thirty A M to two thirty P M, lunchtime, four P M to nine thirty P M dinner, and proposed alcohol beverage service hours are Monday to Sunday, eleven thirty A M to two thirty P M, four P M to nine P M. All those in favor? Bernard?
I.
John?
I.
Miriam?
I.
Mike?
I.
And the chair votes I. Thank you very much and best of luck.
Thank you very much. We hope to see you there. Take care.
Great. So our last public hearing on our docket this evening is a transfer of category called the Coolidge Corner Theater. Interesting. Oh, for also a wine and malt beverage license. Anyone to, they want to change from a wine and malt to an all alcohol, which is what we were basically just talking about. Anyone here from the Coolidge?
Yes, good evening. This is Andrew Thompson. I'm the Director of Operations and the manager of record for our existing beer and wine license.
Excellent. Well, so business is so good. You want to serve more?
Well, we could certainly use a boost to income. Things are getting much better now that we've reopened, but it's you know, the nonprofit independent movie business is largely driven by concessions, and in our case, beer and wine has made up a good chunk of our income since we received a beer and wine license in, I believe, two thousand nine. And we are looking forward to this opportunity to expand our offerings to our patrons. We don't have any immediate plans to to do anything other than have some mixed drinks at special events once we're offered this, but as I believe you all know, we are in the middle of a major construction project, putting addition on the building. And that's looking to be finished early next year, and we have not formulated any plans to change the existing Formulated any plans to change the existing building or expand the area where our current bar is. But. If we are granted this license amendment. Then we are going to look into all that we will need to do to have an expanded area for our bar. And. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot to be done. We were notified of the opportunity to have this amendment by Tiffany, actually. When we were looking into getting a temporary liquor license for a one-off event. And so our Board of Directors and Managers wanted to pursue it. And so I've done all the paperwork and we've notified the butters. And submitted the application. And that's where we are at the moment.
Great, thank you. I just have a couple of questions because this is a rather unusual entity requesting an all alcohol license. How, so. It makes me feel a little bit better that you're going to start off doing this for special events. Because what, what makes me a little nervous is, you know, selling a mixed drink, it walks away. And it is kind of unaccounted for. We don't allow that even with our outdoor seating. There have to be like roped off sections so that the liquor licensee has some sort of. Control over the serving of the alcoholic beverage. What is your vision for, I guess, controlling, you know, who you sell it to and making sure it does not leave the premises?
Uh, well, we already have those measures in place. No alcohol is allowed to be removed from the premises. I, I don't know how many of you have frequented the Coolidge or our bar, but we currently have a very small area. And the way things work generally is customers come in for a movie, get their seats, come out and get a drink. Go back to their seats, watch the movie, movie ends and they leave. It's very rare for someone to even come out during the movie to get a second drink. That said, no, we've. The, the, the support is actually giving us a. I can't remember how many years ago, but the issue came up that only one drink can be served to an individual. And the board, I believe our license has wording right on it that we can serve two drinks to a customer. As long as they present identification for both people that they're getting the drinks for. Because people go in and get their seats, one person comes out to get drinks for them and their partner. And that's a fairly common thing. You know, since we started serving beer and wine, we have had no major incidents. And we do keep an incident log and myself and all the supervisors, managers, projectionists, everyone is tips trained. And also a crowd manager certified.
Great, that makes me feel so much better. Any other questions from select board members? John?
Thanks. It's, it's such a pleasure to be dealing with a subject upon which I have some personal knowledge. I had, I enjoyed a beer and, and a movie just this past weekend. And, and yes, as described, what, what is the usual experience, at least as I've seen it? In practice at the movie house is someone will have a beer, just like people will walk in with popcorn. You know, and enjoy popcorn with the movie. They'll enjoy a beer or a glass of wine with the movie. And woe to the person who goes for a second glass of wine or beer. Because sitting in a darkened theater with a second drink is probably a quick route to falling asleep or something or missing the rest of the movie. So the, the, the practice is a harmless one. At the same time, I, I'll confess, I think I, I'm gonna vote for this. All alcoholic beverages license. But I do think the, the operators of the theater in their usual fashion are going to have to be a little bit discreet. As to exactly how they do events that feature the cocktails or, you know, straight drinks. And they have a very ambitious future plan with lots of fundraising events and other types of events. Those seem appropriate. You know, serving straight alcohol to people who are sitting through a movie might not be the best idea in the world. Yeah, but they'll have to figure that out and, and hopefully it'll all work out smoothly for, for all concerned.
Bernard?
Uh, yes, thank you. I'm gonna warn you. In, in advance that I'm gonna ask you an inappropriate, or make a statement, it may be an inappropriate statement at this time. But I'm using my, my position as a select board member voting on your license to, to do it. And I will vote for this license. But I do wanna say, because you're the only person that I can talk to right now. I went to an incredibly great movie at the Coolidge Corner Theater. It was really an incredibly great movie called Elvis. And it's excellent movie and thank you for bringing it to us. You had a, a Elvis impersonator singing some Elvis songs beforehand. And while I'm not usually sensitive to issues like this, one of the songs that he sang was Dixie. And I think that there needs to be some sensitivity on the part of the Coolidge Corner Theater about situations like that. Dixie, I find to be a very offensive song. I know that Elvis loved it and I accept that, that Elvis was living in the fifties and sixties and I guess seventies. And this is two thousand twenty. So I just wanna, you know, make, I just wanna make the point that the theater needs to be a little sensitive to the fact that we're in Brookline. Not, you know, Tupelo in, in, in this, this, this one situation. I have stated my position.
Yeah, thank you very much for that comment. I was, was unaware of that particular song. But I'm going to relay it to the people who were instrumental in bringing in the. We, we actually had a couple of different Elvis impersonators the last weekend, so I'll talk to the person who contacted them.
I raised it with a couple of people at the theater and with the singer himself. But I just wanna, you know, make sure that you're sensitive to those issues or an issue like that.
Absolutely.
It was a great movie though. Everyone should go see it.
I, I very much hope I have time to see it myself. I see far fewer movies than you might expect despite working there.
I had a job in high school as an ice cream operator and it, it kinda soured me a little bit. When you're around something so much, you actually don't enjoy it.
In my case, it's, it's simply time. So, yeah, but I, I understand that for sure.
So any other comments before I, well, you know what? This is a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing. I will ask Devin if there are any members of the public who wish to speak.
It's time there are five attendees and no one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment. I would like to point out a comment in the Q and A to board members. That is from Ryan Black. It says, serving cocktails is something that larger movie theater chains like AMC often do.
That is a fair point. So I will close the public hearing and unless there are any further comments or questions. I will move the language to be voted. I will move the approval of the application for a change in category for the Coolidge Corner Theater doing business as the Coolidge Corner Theater. From a wine and malt common vic to an all alcohol common vic at two ninety Harvard Street. All those in favor? Bernard?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Miriam?
I.
Mike?
Hi.
And the chair votes I. Thank you so much and best of luck.
Thank you all very, very much. Much appreciated. Have a good night.
Have a good night. So reminder, next week, we are not meeting. We will resume on the evening of July twelfth. That's it. Oh, and it will be hybrid. We will be, the board will be back in person.
If any of the board members feel they need further instruction on the difference between cordials and cocktails. I'll be happy to. It'll be on me and, and I'll start with Bernard, but.
Well, the question is when you provide samples.
Oh, that, that goes without saying. This is.
Are you offering to buy drinks? Because in that case, yes, I need.
If, if, if it's not inappropriate to do so, I am offering to buy drinks. Only one per person, however.
And the difference between liquor and cord, and cordials is not clear. For example, absinthe is not a cordial, even though it's, it's otherwise made like.
Yeah, yeah. Turns out there's quite a history to the confusion around this subject, but it's all explained online. I, I also wanted to belatedly wish Miriam a happy fiftieth birthday. And I want to assure you, it only gets better, Miriam.
Says those of us who have been there done that.
I don't know why, but Mel's going like this.
I'm wondering the same thing, Mel.
Okay, see you guys in two weeks. Happy Fourth of July.